Legions to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, okay. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Any none? I have any motion for the proposal?
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
A motion.
Support. Go ahead.
Properly supported. Any other discussion? Is there any here? Not, uh, well, in the order. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same time. Hey, the minutes of September ninth, two thousand twenty-five are regularly meeting last week. I'm not sure if everybody got these in advance. I know they didn't get mailed out. Probably sent them out. Everybody had a chance to look at those and. I entertain a motion for action on them. I'm asking what's up with written. Okay, I have a motion.
I'll support.
Support, thank you. Any other discussion on it? Hearing none, call for your, call for the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Okay. Uh, let's see, public comment for items, uh, on the agenda. Okay. Alright, good. Now we'll get right down to the nitty gritty here. Business items, discussion of accessory dwelling units. And Kevin has provided us with a couple examples and I'll turn it over to him to walk us through that.
So yeah, there's a few things to the planning commission review. We've got some samples from a few different communities, uh, Escoda, Crockerie Township and Greenland. Um, we've also provided a first draft for what could be adopted by Sparta Township, um, based on the commissions' deliberations at your last meeting. We used a lot of this in Escoda Townships, um, nature to include items regarding, uh, water and septic. So we have that for your review. Um, so we'd like to get all of your directions on all of those items there and then specifically, supposed to get minimum floor area for the first draft. We inserted three hundred square feet. Uh, but we want to make sure that that number is acceptable to you all.
Now let's see, page one of one, it's just the draft, okay. Any, any discussion on that? Tim, have you had a chance to look it over?
Oh, absolutely not, but I do have a question. Um, so we're talking living space, correct? Uh, just because we're working on one in a different township right now and the actual pole barn is, I don't know, twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand square feet. But the living space is, that's what this is based on, is the living space. So you can build a bigger pole barn and put a three hundred square foot living space in it. And that could be looked at as an ADU, as far as how this is written.
Uh, I see that the, what you and Barb were looking at is not, that is a copy from another community. At the top for the Sparta, it should say Sparta Township Draft Accessory Dwelling Unit Populations.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I was reading that.
Uh, but yeah, it is designed, uh, I could clarify that point that has such a minimum floor area is of three hundred square feet. I could, um, clarify that the maximum square footage for living space, um, but it is written in a way that they can be included as part of a larger detached accessory building.
You don't have a max on the Sparta one. I see a max on the other one.
I didn't put a max in on this draft based on the commission's last conversation. So, you know, somebody built a five thousand square foot pole barn and they say they've got a, you know, eight hundred square foot living area. Once we approve it, we don't really have a way to go back into the building and show that they're adhering to it. Um, we can include a maximum living area if you'd like.
I would like to see a maximum living area included in it. Yes, I mean, you're right, we have no way of, they can't say that we didn't have it. I mean, I'd hate to see them build a five thousand square foot pole barn and then having four thousand square foot living floors in it. I mean, that's another house. And if, heaven forbid, there'd be a fire, at least that way, I think we'd be covered by any fire commercial that they were told. It cannot be bigger than thus.
Because I think our original idea, at least my original idea, was to accommodate an elderly parent or a special needs child or, you know, something of that nature as opposed to a whole family, you know?
A second, yeah, exactly. I would like to see no larger than eight hundred and fifty square feet.
In that comment you made, Kevin, about them, um, could go out and build it out further if they want. Quite honestly, that's on them because I know, um, if you build something without a permit, so even if you change interior walls and all this stuff on without a permit, say there was a fire, the insurance company can deny the claim.
If they approve.
What was built under permit and what was not built under permit. So if you have extra buildup, I may or may not have done that at one point in my life. And so my insurance guy switched my insurance to somebody else because they come out and look at what you got and insure that. And then afterwards, we switched back. Because if you build something, any structure without a permit, it's not insurable. Why you're under the same policy.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
To Barb's point, if we did some kind of percentage of the building, would that entail where you couldn't exceed on, I'm just talking fifty percent or for that maximum living area? Or do you think that that wouldn't accomplish?
I don't think that's gonna prevent, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't interrupt.
No, no, you're fine. It's kind of like what Tim was talking about. For an example that he has is, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, say a twenty-five thousand square foot pole building. If you said, okay, I can put a percentage of that is a living area because it's so big, is that, or it just doesn't cover? I mean, I'm asking you, Barb, like, what are your thoughts on that? Do you think that eight hundred and fifty is like the, um, I'll say the magic number?
I'm looking at it as a, as we originally said, this is to help perhaps, um, elderly parents or handicapped individual. It's, it's not meant to house an entire extra family. You know what I'm saying is, I, I just think we open a can of worms if we get it any larger than a certain square footage.
So you think that we should have at least like a, a range, let's just say to three hundred to?
Yeah, like three hundred minimum, but max is eight fifty.
Okay, I just wanted to understand kind of where you're.
That, that's where my thought, and I believe Tyrion, correct me wrong, his thought was coming from. I mean, today you have so many individuals that, you know, parents, that they can't afford to live on their own or they shouldn't be living on their own. But the family wants to take care of them, but they want to have their privacy. You know, I mean, nursing homes are very expensive.
True.
And this way you could have those family members close, yet they could have their privacy and you could have your privacy. And I know a number of people who have adult handicapped individuals who would love to be in their own apartment, but shouldn't be or can't be. But this would give them their own quarters. You know, you, you wouldn't want something bigger that they couldn't handle.
Sure.
But at the same time, they'd be close by and you could check on them, but it gives them their independence. I think that's the main goal here, so.
Just, just out of curiosity, like, what, did you come up with, the eight fifty seems like a number that?
My house is nine hundred and five square feet.
Okay, good answer.
It is two bedroom. My one bedroom is eight by ten. My front bedroom is ten by fourteen. I have one bathroom. I have a galley kitchen and my living room is ten by fourteen.
Okay, good answer.
And it's just right for a couple without having too much to take care of. And my laundry is on the main floor. That's where I'm coming from.
See, Crockerie has a percentage. Does that work well for them?
Yes, um, I'm trying to recall my memory. So Crockerie, that was recently updated. One of the issues they were running into, um, was that an ADU had to be separate. It couldn't be included, if I remember correctly, it couldn't be included as part of like an existing accessory building. Um, so essentially what, they changed some of their rules. Because what they required before was essentially allowing, requiring people to build larger accessory buildings than they needed to. Um, so that's where they made some of their recent amendments, but with the amended versions in front of you, it seems to be working well. It's been in place for around a year or a little bit long.
Okay, I have a question on that. Uh, I mean, the original conversation that Tim brought up was an example of having a pole barn and dedicating X number of square footage of that as the ADU, correct? But in the first item in the proposal that you put together was, it says an ADU must be detached from the principal building. So does that mean that that ADU, even though it's internal to an accessory building, would be considered detached?
Yeah, so the principal building would be the single family home on the property. So it'd be the principal building, um, put in for uh, item M, because that can be erected as an integral part of a permitted accessory building.
Okay, sorry, I missed that.
I think the other, um, thing that supports the smaller is the last O. You don't want someone using this as a hotel motel. You don't want it become a bed and breakfast. And I think keeping them small is going to prevent that. You get them large and you could basically open yourself up to be a VRBO, VRBO and all those other sites, so.
Are we looking at any type of lot size to be able to do this on?
Not currently, not with the way it's written, because it would be.
I didn't see any of, any of them having any large lot sizes, so.
No, really what would control it is, um, we already have the, we so item L, it comes towards the maximum numbers for certain footage for accessory buildings. So if somebody did build one, it still go back to that. Okay, you can have three accessory buildings and then depending on how, how large your lot is, you can have that maximum square footage.
Right.
For accessory buildings. So I did not include a minimum lot area specific to ADUs. Um, also with the intent that they would have to provide uh, proof of approval from the county health department that the well and septic on site was able to, uh, support the, the ADU.
And are, are we going to be requiring separate wells, separate septic systems for these?
Uh, the way it's written is it would be up to the health department. The health department says the existing well and septic's sufficient, then they would be able to use it. Otherwise, they'd have to work with the health department either to improve the existing wells or create new wells.
If the health department sizes your septic based on the number of bedrooms you have, so you had another bedroom, they're gonna probably say something. Bedroom, if you would say.
So your next page goes with this, I'm assuming?
Nope, the, the, the draft regulations is only one page long.
No? Okay, so what's the second page?
Looking at.
I apologize for not labeling that better. That is, so there's a, um, this is Crockerie's sample.
Oh, okay. I thought that was part of your, your, what you were describing, so okay, thank you. That helps.
I realize that I had listed the, the file name separately, but I didn't include it on the actual.
Well, your final.
And the six point three six is Escoda. May I just bring it in?
And those, uh, one of them noticed that you had maintained the same address. Is that something that we want to do or? Kind of keep it a little bit from what our original, at least my intent was, you know, to have it for aging parents or, uh, children, you know, that's.
Yeah, what I'm expecting to happen will be something similar like what we do with, uh, either the mobile home parks or with, um, the airport where they're all listed under that same property, but for the, for the Sparta Airport, for example, each individual hangar has its own individual address. So that way if there is an emergency call, those responders can get to that hangar. So that's why I didn't include any language within the zoning ordinance, so that has a process.
That's a situation.
We need to make sure that emergency responders can get to the house and if they need a, you know, nineteen hundred dash A or they have nineteen oh one, that determination can be made when that application is processed.
So they would be subject then to all the other setback rules that we have as far as lot lines and they have to be in the backyard then?
Yeah, those were in the sample. I included that it would only be allowed in the rear yard. And then to clarify too, that it's for the principal building setbacks and not accessory building setbacks. So it'd have to be the same setbacks as the house. Which, um, the only difference there and the side yard setback, both for a house and accessory building are ten feet, but then the rear yard setback would be increased. Um, accessory building only has to be set at ten feet from your rear yard, where an accessory dwelling unit would have to be set back thirty-five feet from the, the rear lot line.
Question on that, Kevin? So how does that work if you got an accessory building and the back part of it's ten foot from the lot line? And it's a hundred foot long and they want to create, uh, an ADU in the front corner of that? Or is it the whole structure that falls under that qualification?
That would be the issue in putting into an existing accessory building is that'd be that thirty-five foot setback. The way this is written, that would not be approved in accessory dwelling in that building. So that is something we can strike.
Would you strike it or would you just add language in if it's proposed in an existing accessory building?
No, it's a good point. I could just add language to clarify that it has to, the living area has to be set back thirty-five feet at minimum, not necessarily the building itself.
So they couldn't, they couldn't put it in the back of that building, but they could put it in the front part of that building then?
Correct.
If they met the thirty-five, no, yeah.
I do like some of the language in the other ones with a maximum size or percentage of the primary.
We talked too about, uh, actually adding on to the primary residence and making like a we, we didn't want to have, we didn't, we didn't want to have two entrances or, you know, to make it look like a duplex type of thing.
That was my understanding is that, you know, somebody built a mother-in-law suite in their basement, it's still a single family home. We're not going to treat that as something separate, but then they wouldn't necessarily be able to build an attached accessory dwelling unit on the back. We would just consider that a duplex because there's if it's an integral part of the single family home, then it's just an addition or remodel. Um, but they would not be able to create a duplex out of the house. So that's why we, uh, included language that says it shall be detached.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question. I, you may have this in here. I'm trying to read all through it, but do we have, kind of to your point, the, the ability to limit if they put an accessory dwelling unit in their house? And decided or needed to put another one, like detached, is that allowed in this? As long as they meet the same criteria for the square footage and stuff? In other words, if they took a, a wing of their house currently and they had, I'm just saying, a, a special needs child that needed that and then later on they had mother-in-law, father-in-law had to move and they wanted to build something separate for them, would we be okay with that with our setup?
I think the way I would treat it based on their, the conversations last time, so if somebody, if somebody was building a mother-in-law suite in their basement, I necessarily, I would necessarily see that. That would just be, you know, we can't, is that a anybody could build a kitchen in their basement and use it for entertaining, so that wouldn't be a zoning concern. Um, if somebody was going to put down an addition that included, you know, another kitchen and things like that. Some of the things I'd be looking for is their shared access, you know, is there at, at least a doorway in between the existing structure or not? But if they had like a, just a separating wall, that there was no access between the addition and the rest of the house, I would consider that a duplex. Um, if they built the addition, they had a mother-in-law suite, bedroom, bathroom, kitchenette, that would just be a single family house. They'd still be able to build a detached accessory dwelling.
That answered my question, to be fair. I mean, sometimes it's really hard to look through all these, trying to hypothetically come up with all the scenarios that you don't allow something that falls through the cracks and you go, oh, we didn't think about that one.
I think we got a good start on it, you know, maybe we'll take a meeting to think it over and put it more in, in the right terms as far as anything else to those. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Lots on it.
Mister Chairman, are we supposed to take some kind of action or on this or like make a suggestion to move it to the board or no? Yes.
Well, I mean, certainly that would be an option. I don't know, Kevin, are you ready to finalize something?
Uh, if the planning commission wants, um, I think right now the three action items I have are to update item G to, to verify that setback is to the living area and not necessarily the whole accessory building. Uh, update to add another item after item K to include a maximum square footage of eight hundred and fifty square feet. And then, uh, those are, I should say, there's two items. Um, my next step would be to either update those and bring them back to the planning commission or I could create a formal draft and then send it to the township's legal council to review. And then once legal council's reviewed, bring it back to the planning commission. And then maybe your next steps would be to schedule the public hearing and then after the public hearing, make a recommendation to the board.
What's everybody's thought on that? It's Barb, which way would you want to go?
Um, after reading Crockerie's, and I don't know if any of you read it, but they have a D there that says no more than two persons shall reside in the AUD. I think that's something we could also adopt thereby K and the size. Does that, how does anybody else feel?
Where are you, Barb?
It's on that sheet from Crockerie. It's D. No more than two persons shall reside in the ADU. I said AUD, but I meant ADU.
It's D. I got you.
We knew it, you're right. But you know, it, it does bring up an interesting point though. That's something we don't have covered in ours.
We don't have control over it, but if it's there and there's something that happens, you're covered.
And it, and it goes more along with original thoughts.
Yeah, of, of the purpose of these.
Right.
ADU.
Well, I think that's a good point. Theos feel that we should put a limit?
Yeah, I think with, to that point, that would be another reason that, to Barb's point, that the square footage, I mean, you probably would have a two thousand square foot ADU for more than two, if it's just two people.
Mm-hmm.
So that may be another way to put some language in there that would limit. Uh, like, I for the life, we can't think of a scenario where they, you'd want in one ADU more than potentially two people, but maybe you guys can.
Right. Like I say, that was kind of our original thought is what, what we even brought this up for is to hit those couple situations.
My thought is if you've got a couple of kids that, you know, say your daughter or son and their family need to live somewhere in an emergency, then they live in the house and mom and dad move into the ADU.
That's another.
Because they're going to want to be away from their family.
Yeah.
Mister Chairman, I got one thing. Number one, I like how you put that because I don't think we're ever going to be able to enforce that, but but the bottom line is we're covered if something happens. So I like that. But I'm just wondering up in the top in the write-up, um, because we're, you're allowing, we're allowing them both ways, a new building and an addition to an existing ADU, correct? Is that what, then should we change that, uh, it says every ADU shall have a minimum width of twenty-two feet for its entire length and a minimum double pitch roof. I'm just wondering if it's that, then if you put an addition on, it's got to be twenty-two foot? Or are you more thinking that's addressing standalone ADUs?
So that language was taken, uh, same language that's in the zoning ordinance right now for the definition of a dwelling. So that's where that language came from. Um, you know, I, I would say with like a single family home, sometimes you'll see like a sun porch. So when I'm looking at, when I'm reviewing a single family home, I'm looking more at the main structure. Okay, is it at least twenty-two foot wide and twenty-two foot long? And if there's a, a sunroom under something like that, then that's not a major concern. Um.
My thought is, is so maybe they have somebody moving in, grandma or mom or whatever, moving into a portion of the house and all they're gonna do is put a little, you know, ten by ten addition for a bathroom and a closet for, or something.
First, to addition to a single family home, I don't think I'd think twice about it. That's the main structure still needs those minimum.
Right, I got you. Okay, just wondering how you consider that.
But I mean, that does bring up a good point too. Now, let's say we had an existing accessory building, a pole barn, and then you wanted to build, uh, ten by twenty addition onto that. I don't know, based on that language, if that's something that I would approve. Yeah, I don't know. I'm trying to think of how I would look at that down the road. Is it, I would treat that, I think, a little bit separately than I would addition to a single family house because the ADU is kind of a separate thing. So that would be something to consider.
Because if they decide to build the minimum living square footage, the way we have a role with three hundred square foot, then they have to have, go twenty-two foot in length. That means it's going to be thirteen foot wide.
No, yeah, that would be an issue if they were putting on an addition to an existing accessory.
So that's the only reason I was wondering about that. So that's the only reason I was wondering about that.
But that says, that does say floor area, should it say floor area within an existing building? No?
Well, that's our minimum, if that's the minimum we go with with the A D U, that minimum is going to go with whether it's a separate.
Okay.
Or it's an addition, I would think. So I don't know that the the copying the verbiage out of the pri- from the primary house, I don't know if that's quite appropriate, we might.
That'd be the other issue, if you had an existing pole barn, but it didn't have the double pitch roof, I would not be able to write an accessory dwelling unit within that pole barn. So I could strike that language, the last couple sentences from the definition regarding minimum width of double pitch roof. I just think it needs to be massaged, but.
What size did you say your house was, Barb?
Pardon?
What size did you say your house was?
My house is nine hundred and five square feet. Happy to give a tour.
What?
Happy to give a tour.
Then don't forget, we would be out early, I think one of the reasons I copied that language from principal buildings, I mean, planning commission discussed that you didn't wanna see um mobile homes, like single-family homes used as accessory dwelling units. So if we remove that, then we, the planning mission might wanna include a provision that says, you know, mobile homes may not be used as accessory dwelling units.
It needs to.
Did you have that in there?
You have it.
And that's and.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so that's already in there.
Yeah, 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 I was gonna say, I thought I read that.
Everybody's thought.
Maybe they should say, well, is a park model homes, you know what I'm talking about, park model, is that considered a mobile home?
I'd have to refer back to the zoning ordinance definitions to see how you guys define mobile homes.
Yeah, yeah, because a park model, some of them are like three hundred square feet. Just FYI, so.
I believe it's considered a mobile home unless it's, because we probably have some in our township that are not con- that are considered trailers, but because a a mobile home or a modular home or a park model, it has to come right from the manufacturer and be permanently affixed to a foundation.
Right.
Right, and then they put a tag on it to say that they brought it from here, set it there, it was attached to this foundation, because even if if you don't have one of those tags, you can't even get financing on a piece of property with one of them, so. So I don't know if those park models are, they're just tied down, I mean, if you're talking that are in the trailer park, they're no wise, they're they're just tied down, they're not actually sitting on a foundation.
They have skirting around them a lot of times, but a lot of times, they take the wheels off.
Yeah.
Yeah, so then is it a mobile home or not?
So the the zoning ordinance does differentiate between a mobile home and a modular, um the definition of a mobile home is a structure transportable in one or more sections that is built on a chassis, designed to be used with or without a permanent foundation. When connected to the required utilities, includes plumbing, heating, air conditioning and electro systems contained in the structure. Long one, but then modular home is a structure that meets requirements of the B O C A Building and Construction Code. So the zoning ordinance does give me the ability to differentiate, so if somebody said, well, this is modular, not a mobile, then I think my first step would be like, well, show me proof that it meets the B O C A standards. That would, but it would exclude anything that was built on the chassis, right, it was a a park model or something like that, it's built on the chassis, then.
Park models usually are on chassis, so.
Okay. So.
Stay tuned.
Yeah, stay tuned.
So I think right now, my understanding is I would update the definition to remove the double pitch roof from the minimum width requirements. Update to fully clarifying on the setbacks, then including a maximum square footage. If the planning commission wanna see that again before it goes to legal council for review.
And the max two people?
And the max two people, thank you, yep, I do it.
I I don't think we need to, I.
With those changes, don't?
With those changes, everybody's thoughts on that, I think it's.
Why send it to legal review and then?
Yes.
See what comes back after that.
I'll get the formal draft prepared, get to legal council, and as soon as I have his comments, I'll bring it back to the planning.
Next time they do, you can view the planning commission's wood list. Changes out of this just.
There were a few items that I wanted to bring to the planning commission's attention.
Okay.
Other than that, I I really, my goal tonight is to see if there's any other items you guys wanted to start working on, um or just wanted to focus on A D U's for now.
So your comments for PC review, planning commission review, that's the things you wanted to bring up to us, yeah.
Yeah, just to see if it's anything that you wanted to proceed with, uh so the first goal point is maximum setback for agricultural dwellings. I know in some of our communities, um in agricultural districts, they'll they'll also have a maximum setback, so for example, um I think it's poked in township, I think it's either a hundred foot or two hundred foot, that's a maximum setback from the the side lot lines. The intent of that, having a maximum setback is so that the the home stays near the property lines and helps preserve um as much agricultural land as possible. Reason I bring this up is it was, um so three, six, five, zero, thirteen mile, um they built the home very far back on the property, um they were looking at potentially splitting it, splitting the home from the agricultural property, but because of where the home's located, they likely won't be, gonna be able to get a special land use for that division. And it's my understanding, they ended up having to sell the whole forty acres to somebody else and weren't able to hopefully that new owner's gonna still maybe rent or do something with that land, but they did end up paying to sell the whole forty acres to somebody else where, at least in that specific case, if there had been a maximum setback, it would have, could have been forced the home to be close to the road and situated in such a way that it could have made could have been approved as a non-agricultural dwelling split and would have preserved maybe thirty-eight acres of agricultural land, so. I just wanted to get the planning commission's feedback to see if that's something you you would like to proceed further of having maximum setbacks for dwellings in the A one district.
I think it's a good idea.
What's Ken's thought, Mister Farmer?
What's that? Ag, you're talking about just ag one, right? I heard that just quick, I think, but is that correct?
My original intent to bring is just for, just for ag one.
Yeah, I think I think that that would be good, I can see the scenario happening, just what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I'm trying to envision who that.
You're talking about.
Who that is that?
The Beisel, right, so, yeah, widow's home.
Yeah.
Because they built the house so far back.
Right.
This will probably be something that Rob talks to us about anyway, wanting for preserving land, ag land.
I think it's a good idea, too.
Yeah.
That's, um. So it is.
I think it is.
Yeah.
So I'll add that to work list, and that's where I guess I'd like to see the the planning commission's feedback on where to put that on the work list. Do you want it at the end or somewhere else?
I guess I'd put it up there by the sliding scale, because it's got to do with, you know, being able to split off.
I guess they would tie together with.
So I guess I'd make A and B kinda thing.
Excuse me. Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I have a question, it like says the private road committee no longer needed. Um I know Rob was pressing for like potentially to have a same rule as like Alpine, they don't allow private roads. Did we do something where we don't allow private roads anymore?
We can, right now, they are allowed as a special land use, and I mean, bars set really high, it's near impossible to get a private road into A one and to get ag one anymore, that is something that, um with the private road committee, that was gonna be a request from me, the planning commission is um now both with myself, with the township engineering, engineer reviewing private roads, um the 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 private road committee still reviews site plans, but it ends up being more of a rubber stamp than anything else, and it just it adds a lot of extra red tape. Um and I know Barb, you're on the private road committee, so I'm having your feelings on that, too.
I I don't see any sense in having two members coming, having to come in and meet, meeting with the people asking, when essentially it is, the final say comes from Kevin and.
Sure.
You know, it just, it's, it's like you said, it's just red tape, I mean, if we can cut that out, I think they're totally they're they're the ones who are gonna go through the steps and say they need this, this and this. And then you're just saying, what do you guys think, and we live in a, yeah. Based on what you're telling us, so I just don't see any sense in us having a committee for that.
Are we moving forward with the suggestion that we don't allow private roads?
That, um.
I mean, we would have to make a petition to the board or whatever.
I think that would be some of the board would have to decide.
I know.
Completely.
Okay.
About whether or not we allow going forward any private roads, yeah.
Okay.
We don't have, how many have we, uh requests have we had in the last, since I've been on here, one.
Sure.
So I've been on, going on five years, and there's been one request.
I was on it for quite a long time, and we didn't do that many, I can't, you know.
So.
We have quite a bunch of them.
There's like Tommy Drive.
Not in ag one.
No, no, not ag one.
You're just talking about ag one.
Ag one, right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, cause so this is just in ag one?
Yeah, yeah, we don't, no, we haven't heard any, any in ag one.
Tommy Tommy Drive is actually an ag one, and that was allowed back when, so there was one.
If the the planning commission's inclined to no longer allow private roads at all in ag one, that's something we could do at the same time as we update the zoning ordinance to the private road committee, so um I guess that's where I keep looking for your feedback on if you want to.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it is, too.
Yeah.
Just to clarify.
Just re-clarify no more, no more private roads.
In ag one.
In ag one.
Because that really, now that, that the PDU, if a person was help me with, a PDU would potentially be allowed in ag one.
Ag. Two.
Well, like for example, just to bring up the, like by your house, that one, wasn't that ag one at that time?
I don't believe so.
The Fleet Farm was an ag one?
No, I think that's ag two.
Okay, that would make sense, I didn't know, because I could see that just happened.
The front was residential.
Ah.
The back was ag two.
Okay, but none of it was ag one?
No, no, never was.
Okay, that makes sense, no. Sorry to ask so many questions.
That's what we're here for.
Now, how was the private road committee established? Was that just something that we, I mean, is it part of a regulation somewhere or?
Yeah, it's a requirement of the zoning ordinance right now, so we worked through.
We have to amend the zoning ordinance and.
Yep, to remove that requirement. Yep, we did amend the zoning ordinance, and at the same time, we could look at the private roads within ag one, sorry, within ag one. We could amend that whole private road section at the same time, the planning commission wants.
We don't have any other applications at this point.
Nothing for for ag one, we do have one. We've had two private roads recently approved, uh one off of the vision, which is ag two, um. Where was it? Oh, and then another private road, we've had two private roads, one's off Sparta Avenue in ag two. And then there's a pending application right now for another private road in ag two off of Lonely Drive. That's where, right now, currently, that's probably where I'm seeing uh most of the development within, in Sparta Township is within the northeast section within ag two, using balanced splits and creation of using family homes.
All right. Last bullet point.
What's what's O Z?
The. Z O.
Z O.
Yeah, the zoning ordinance, so, um.
Zero.
Oh, zero, I'm dyslexic tonight, I am dyslexic tonight, see, man.
You're too much. Yeah.
Fish, sorry.
You're keeping us on our toes, we could.
I guess I am, it was a test, you pants.
So that would be a larger projects, I know I've had uh some conversations with Supervisor Bergman, um I know Tim and I talked a little bit. But one of the things I'm seeing is uh Sparta's zoning ordinance is uniquely structured in some ways. Um so I'll get calls sometimes even from fairly uh from engineering firms that are familiar with zoning ordinance, just looking for some basic items, because they can't find it within Sparta's zoning ordinance. Uh so that would be one of my goals, is once the master plan's done, doing kind of a full review of the zoning ordinance, not to change in the language, but to restructure it in such a way that it's more easily understood and easy to, easier to find some of the information that people are looking for, um so I don't know if the planning commission has any comments or concerns on that, but something that likely, maybe next year, and the last year, next year, I'd be coming back to just work through that project, and something I'd likely wanna go to the board, too, because again, that would be a fairly large project, so. I'd love to get your input if there's anything else you'd have.
Tackle like that, like the master plan and go through, wow.
Is it more coming like where you're trying to, like a flow chart of things, like if you're looking for this, then it breaks into this tree, into that tree, to that tree, or more the organization of the actual information? And the the ability on, I'll say, the website to find it, or is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, just making sure, um so that people can go to the zoning ordinance and find information easier, I think one of the is specifically the the use in the bulk, so there's a the table of use regulations, which is located at the end of the zoning ordinance in the in the appendix, and it shows, okay, within the R one district, here's, you know, all the uses that are allowed, um and then it talks about parking regulations in the same chart, and it's not clear, parking regulations apply to all of the zoning districts, but then the way they're structured is like, well, are these just the parking regulations for ag one? So that would be part of it is likely creating separate chapters for each zoning district, so hey, here's ag one, here's all of the allowed uses, here's the minimum lot areas, here's the minimum widths and setbacks. And then same thing for each additional district, so that when somebody's looking for that information, it's all in one spot. You know, likely then also creating either a separate section or chapter, here's your parking regulations. Um that would be more in line with how I see most zoning ordinances are structured. So really, the goal is just to take what's already there and put it in a a format that's easier to find.
User-friendly like this.
Yeah, more user-friendly, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
That's something we should do or be thinking about, you know?
Definitely, I just, so I think that's one, you know, getting the board approval for.
Planting the seed.
Yeah.
I'm good. Okay. All right, we've come to the section of public comment for items not either on or not on the agenda.
Finally, your turn.
Uh my name's Lauren Peterson, junior, I live at one two two five zero Sparta Avenue. Um we ran on and in August, and we were requesting a land split for eight acres of my dad's property, and it's like that, and then as we sit here. We didn't, we're listening, but we don't know. We did, we're listening, but we don't know what we can do and say or understand what's truly going on. So then a brother came to me and said, do you know they have a restriction on the deed for no more splits? I said, I didn't know that, I heard him talking about it, but I didn't realize it got voted on. So I went back into the minutes, looked at the minutes and stuff and sure enough, you know, it went through as as voted, so so. It's kind of our ignorance, not understanding, but again, elementary procedure, when can you raise your hand, okay? So we really didn't know when we could say something. So now already we're voting on, we might see if we can get that overturned, and the reason being is that um. When you look at restriction on deed, it shows concerns of the buyer, okay? I feel this, this should be held in house here, unless you're on a deed in in front. Of your your buyer as you're trying to, trying to sell a property, it's, you know, you're gonna have to, they need to know that anyways, okay? When when they're bu- when they're buying the property, cause that's a. No part of, part of the sale, realty sales, you don't have a very long for.
Disclosure.
With that.
You have to disclose all this?
Disclosure, there you go, disclosure for that anyways.
Okay.
Um I feel that the restriction on a deed kinda inhibit it. Makes you have to lower negotiate on your price a little bit more, because they, okay, you say twenty five, twenty five fifty, seventy seven years down the road. I wanna split off a little bit for my kid for a couple acres, I can understand that on the eight acres, saying, no, we're not gonna split that off. But on the other property, being that. An egg one gives uh would allow or not allow, being it's egg one, if they put that on property, a couple acres for them to split off for their child. Or a parent or something to be able to have that split available to them. But that would be something they'd have to put in all the paperwork and as a, we're learning it, it's a process. Okay, and it's a process to be handled through here, and I don't feel it needs to be handled onto the deed itself.
That's a good question, Mister Chairman.
Uh we're talking about the forty acres.
Yes.
Forty, right?
Well, yeah, ba- basically both the eight and the forty.
The eight and the forty, okay. Have you considered asking for it to be rezoned?
Yeah, what's that?
Rezoned from egg one?
We didn't, we didn't wanna, we didn't rezonate, no, they would have to, if they wanted to rezon themselves, if they bought, they'd have to do that.
Okay, you haven't considered asking for it to be rezoned, so that it would no longer have that restriction, is what I'm asking.
Because uh it says, it says in your uh. Ordinance of uh one fifty four, two oh seven F two D that may be requested, not necessarily has to be requested.
No.
So so I just, okay, yeah, so no, we weren't looking for rezoning of anything like that, for that to come off there. We, I just did one on the deed just for sale purposes of just representing adult people.
So I could try to help provide some clarity, so uh with the special land use, part of, the zoning ordinance requires that all splits for both reparting, they're they're extinguished. From for now and for for perpetuity um. But it is up to the planning's discretion on whether or not to require that in a deed restriction. So regardless if there's a deed restriction or not, there's no further split rights for either of those properties. Uh I think what's been a hurdle for the Petersons is as they're trying to get that processed. Um it's been working with their legal counsel and then trying to prepare an appropriate deed restriction, which is. Adding expense and and time to splitting a property. Um so I think that's what you're questioning, is if the the planning commission would be willing to amend the previous motion to no longer require the restriction.
Are we talking about both the eight and the forty? Okay.
That would be the other issue too, is that if for some reason now the road zoning ordinance did change and allowed for more splits. They still have that deed restriction in place.
That wouldn't be superseded by the new.
Zoning.
That wouldn't be superseded by the new zoning?
I'm not sure what steps a property owner would have to go through to remove that deed restriction.
But it would, it would have the deed restriction whether it was in the deed.
In the zoning.
In the.
Yes.
Egg one versus residential.
Yep, so if it's not in the deed, it's still, if somebody came in in the future for the forty, and said, hey, I wanna split off a non-agricultural lot. That'd be my duty as zoning administrator to check the record, I say, well, sorry, you don't have any splits available.
Then you would have to go through the whole process of rezoning and all, and everything like that, to try to build that wrong, correct?
Potentially.
Why do people do it then?
Hmm?
Why do people put it in the description of the property that there's a?
It was something that the the planning commission required as part of your approval of the special land use.
So what can we do to help them?
If you. Didn't wanna require the deed restriction anymore. I I think it could be as simple as a motion, but this is something that I I might wanna check with legal counsel too and bring it back to your, bring a. Fully reviewed and prepared motion, draft motion for your review at the next meeting.
Would that help?
It would help, I know I could get on road another month.
I know, I don't, I know, you know, you're trying to get something done.
No, we like next week again, it's like another, another month.
I know, I know.
We're trying to, yeah. Right, yeah, we already pushed from August to now, and that's what we're trying to.
Yeah.
Trying to work, work with that a little bit. Not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes, I'm not, we're trying to, yeah, make it so it's not.
No, no, we understand.
Break face front on the deed, I realize when we have it in house here, that it isn't, it's there, but it still needs to be in this, in description and stuff like that. Then it's up to you guys' side when they come in and and uh re, try to get it rezoned or ask that permission to do that.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Why did we put deed restrictions, I guess I missed something here?
One of the requirements.
Pardon me?
Wasn't that one of the requirements?
Was that a requirement that we put?
We put in there, yeah.
So that was part of our, in the the conversation and the legal, we said, okay, we'll grant this. But with this deed restriction into Mister Peterson's.
It wasn't, it wasn't specifically to them.
No, no, I understand, but this, in this case, it is specific to them because it is their.
It applies to their position and their property.
Their application was made per this, so um I don't honestly remember us. Talking about making sure we had deed restrictions on it.
I remember us talking about it, yeah, it was in notes.
Yeah, I know Terry brought it up, we know that it got, it's been brought up the conversation and yeah.
I'm trying to remember like what prompted it, or if it's, if it's standard that we do so normally, I don't know that.
No, I I do remember talking about it, but I just don't um.
I mean, there again, it's an obvious thing, you still, I mean, the zoning ordinance is a zoning ordinance, you have to follow zoning ordinance.
Right.
We just, we put it in there as kind of a highlighter, just to make sure that.
Yeah. And and put it in, in the ordinance, it says they may, so you know, they may ask or against, they may not, so it's, so it's just, yeah.
But and I guess in my, Kevin makes a valid point, um I think that if our, down the road, our zoning ordinances change over that. That's, a deed restriction goes with the deed, I mean, I don't know. How you can get it off there later on, seems to me that's much more of a process than if our ordinance change and we let them split one off down the road, whatever. Just to do it like Ronnie said, at this level, than it is to actually get it removed from a deed. Seems like much more of a legal hassle to to do that, and if our ordinance says they can't do it, then they can't do it. And I think in in Terry's point, when we talked about it a little bit, is it was kinda like that, no, you weren't trying to, but he wanted to make sure everybody knew, right? Where, you you can't do it according to our ordinance, and then it got put right on as a deed restriction, so.
But doesn't your make, doesn't your egg one already cover a lot of that?
Yeah, that's what he said, yeah.
We're just kinda highlighting it basically, so. So what would be the process for us to?
If the planning commission. Well, the best way to do this would be. Might be a multi-step process, if you wanted to try to address something tonight, and something I'd still wanna bring to legal counsel for review. Would be potentially close public comment, have someone make an emotion to amend the agenda, to add an agenda item. To review the Peterson uh special land use, and then for that agenda item, then there would be a motion to. Amend previous motion to remove uh the deed restriction requirement. Again, this is where, there's a couple pieces, so I mean, we could work through that process tonight, and then I would bring it back to the township's legal counsel, just to make sure everything was done properly. And for some reason, there was a step we didn't take, and then bring it back to your attention at the next meeting.
It might have to wait.
What do you guys think? Wait, you'll do it?
Do we have a choice?
Well, it may, I'm gonna say wait, wait for the next meeting, but.
Can I ask you?
I have, I have two others.
Dale?
The question I have is, is, I mean, the the issue that's created from what, I make sure I'm understanding it correctly. Is uh it's creating a situation with a sale.
Yeah.
Because the.
Possible sale, not a sale right now, but.
Yeah, the potential, the the potential buyer.
Yeah.
Um has concern over this deed restriction.
Mm-hmm. Cause you look at, you know, like a twenty five fifty.
Right.
Seventy years down the road, what, where, where are we gonna be sitting as a township of what's, what's moving, where, what's changed zoning wise and things like that?
So it, hypothetically, if a person did buy this knowing the deed restriction was there, they could come in and ask for a rezoning, is that?
Yeah.
If it's consistent with the master plan at the time, I can't remember if, I can look right now.
And that would remove the deed restriction?
No, the rezoning was, that wouldn't remove deed restriction, it would still be.
Wouldn't it still be there? That doesn't make any sense, no. I mean, if you're rezoning it. Uh I don't know, I guess, I don't know.
That doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
It doesn't mean, it seems to me if you're rezoning it.
If you're rezoning it from. From.
You should then fall into the zoning restrictions that are in the new zoning.
Of the new zoning, yeah. If it's egg one and you're asking for it to be rezoned to R one.
To worse, or rather, yeah, yeah, no matter what.
Then it should be able to fall under the R ones zoning.
I would think.
Right?
In the township's respective, but then that property owner would still have to likely go through those steps of removing the deed restriction. I have no idea what that would look like.
Any thoughts there, Dale?
That's where we're at. Uh well, I guess I was a little confused, cause I, I always thought the language is uh as far as. Not allowing any more sliding scale splits was, I thought it was written that the planning commission may put that condition on. But you evidently did put that condition on. And Kevin's saying is that you're required to put that on, but I always thought it was that you may.
Yeah, it is, it's written right here, I made a copy, so I had my information too, so I wasn't coming here, it's gone.
Yeah, the, the zoning ordinance requires that all splits are extinguished, but it's up to the planning commission's discretion on whether or not you wanna require deed restriction to be put in place.
Question be, um is that because of how we split that off? And basically we split it off, how do we split it off, under special use, not conforming, cause it's not. The eight acres is not a typical split.
Correct, so that's where um the sliding scale says, okay, based on the size of your lot, you get so many non-agricultural. Lots, which can be a minimum of one acre and a maximum of two. Um and I think that's what we saw here too, is that eight acres is either equal to or in excess of kinda the. What would have been allowed for non-agricultural lots. So what that requirement says, okay, you're getting a larger than allowed lot, but that means in the future, you're not getting three more non-agricultural dwelling lots.
You know what happened with it, tell me what's up, we have large coal burns on that building.
Yeah.
On that property, and that's where we had to try to comply to a size per square foot is a building to lot size. So that brought us out, got a two week a lot to, or five year a lot to an eight year, eight year a lot.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Is there anything that we need to do to Kevin's direction at this meeting, from the time standpoint? That I don't wanna miss, I guess, an opportunity to his potential point, do we have to make a, a motion to amend, amend, amend? Or it may be possible, we won't be able to do that, say at the next meeting.
I guess we could make a motion to seek legal counsel. Your opinion as to what options we have. With the intent of, you know, we're, we're, we're interested in possibly doing this, is it something that we can do, how do we do it?
You can do it, I, so I think that's the process, I know you can do it, you can amend the special land use. Um I think the direction I'd want from the planning commission is. I haven't really had time to prepare, so I don't have a a draft motion prepared. Um we could attempt to take those steps, if you wanted to try to, you know, first amend the agenda, close public comment, amend the agenda. And then make a motion to amend the previous motion, we could put those steps in there, but I would wanna make sure that. Those steps were, I'd bring that back to legal counsel after it was done, to make sure it resulted properly, or. We could place this on as just a separate agenda item at the upcoming meeting, which would give me time to work with legal counsel to make sure that. It's all ready. At your next meeting.
So you're, you're thinking if, if we got to go ahead, where basically they said we could do it. And at the next meeting, we could formally make the motion and it'd be done.
Yeah, that could be one step, that would give me time to prepare a a full draft motion, make sure that everything was looked over and properly done, we'd wait until the next meeting to do it.
So it's, e- either way, it's gotta be another meeting, correct?
Potentially.
Yes.
Okay. What do you wanna do? We're gonna have to amend the agenda and do all that, we can just go the next step to the next meeting.
Yeah, if you said, hey, put this on as an agenda item for the next meeting, I'd go to legal counsel and have a memo prepared of the draft motion, and we'd make sure that worked.
You work with them to find out exactly what you need to get in that, so that we can do it all at once, next meeting.
Right. Yeah, I think right now my understanding is the planning commission wants to remove that condition from the approval. And that would be my step toward the next few weeks, is to make sure that.
Okay.
I'm presenting this information, make sure we're following the proper procedures.
We'll take it.
That's, that's the best way, round to go.
Yeah.
Either way, it's gonna take another.
It's gonna take, it's time, I understand, it takes time to prep stuff, you know, it's, yeah.
Rules and regulations, they're up in the air.
Can I ask how long ago you realized this?
That's it.
How long ago you realized that?
Well, in the last month, so it's already too late to get on this agenda here, so, yeah.
Yeah.
If I, if I'm hearing Kevin right, we could do it, but if it's wrong, you're still gonna have to wait.
We're gonna wait, yeah, we're gonna wait another month, yeah.
Okay.
It's just process, but. I appreciate your time, thank you so much, buddy, work hard.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody have anything else uh? Whatever.
Our evening?
Our evening, yes.
No, I'm good.
I'm good. I'm good.
You gonna take a motion for adjournment?
I'll write the motion, then we adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Sure, appreciate it.